Good evening, White Marsh. We have a new audio system, so forgive us as we get used to this. I'd like to call our White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting. This is our reorganization meeting, January 3rd, 2023, to order. Patrice?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to nominate Vince Manuel as temporary chair of the Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to nominate Rick Malor as the temporary secretary for the Board of Supervisors?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to nominate Fran McCusker as the Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With the call roll.
Can we do a roll call group?
We can.
Sure.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to also comment tonight that J.C. Toll is still with the board. She's just unable to join us this evening.
Thanks to Southwest Airlines. Do I have a... Are you going to take it from there?
Thank you very much to the board for their faith in me as taking over. I have big shoes to fill, that's for sure. Do I have a motion to nominate J.C. Toll as Vice Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Do I have a motion to appoint Richard L. Miller, Jr. as Township Manager and Secretary by approving his employment agreement with White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
Just...
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to appoint Kevin S. Barron as Finance Director and Treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Kevin. Do I have a motion to appoint Kevin S. Barron as Assistant Secretary?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations again, Kevin. Do I have a motion to appoint Christopher P. Ward as Chief of Police?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Chief. Do I have a motion to appoint Charles L. Guttenplan as Zoning Officer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Charles.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to appoint Sean P. Kilkeny as Township Solicitor?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Sean. Do I have a motion to appoint Krista Heinrich as Township Engineer?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Krista. Do I have a motion to appoint Christopher Selecky as Vacancy Board Member?
I would just have every board member name their individual before you vote. Okay. So Laura?
Sheri Patracas.
Patrice?
Joanna Wood.
Vince?
John Fitzpatrick.
And J.C. have one?
She does. I don't know who it is.
I'm not sure who it is.
I haven't heard any change to the contrary of her previous, though.
So I would just go ahead and move forward with yours. We could appoint J.C.'s at the next meeting.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair.
Do I have a motion to appoint Elizabeth Shaw Fink, Planning Commission; Christian Fossbender, Shade Tree Commission; Kevin Kissling, Parks and Recreation Board; Jeanette Quirish, White Marsh Authority; Diane Smith-Hobin, William Jean's Memorial Library; Tom Higgins, Historical Architectural Review Board; Gordon Geisland, Environmental Advisory Board; Karen Kabnik, Environmental Advisory Board; Christopher Lane, Open Space Committee; Beth Howard, Open Space Committee? Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to all our volunteers on their reappointment. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from December 8th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I was not at that meeting.
Minutes approved. All right. We'll move into Board Public Discussion items. Review SLD #11-22, Alliance HP Spring Mill Property LLC, 1100 East Hector Street, Land Development Waiver, Outdoor Dining for Proposed New Restaurant. Mr. Miller?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Guttenplan to introduce the project and the applicant.
Thank you. This is a land development waiver request for an outdoor restaurant seating area. It's at the Spring Mill Corporate Center at Lee and East Hector Streets. In a moment, you'll hear a presentation about it, but just a couple of facts I just want to mention. This is a restaurant called Goat's Beard that would take the internal space that used to be devoted to Zoe's Cafe, which has been out for a little while. The main focus of this is the outdoor dining area on a patio and a former access area and loading dock area immediately adjacent to the restaurant, parallel to Lee Street. If you recall, at your December meeting, you approved a whole harmless agreement to allow for some existing improvements that are currently in the alternate right-of-way of Lee Street, as well as some of the improvements for this outdoor seating area. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on December 8th and unanimously recommended for approval with discussion about the fact that this is exactly what this neighborhood needs. This is really the type of use that our various plans, including the recent Spring Mill Area Plan, is really envisioning for this area. So the Planning Commission was actually quite enthused about this, and I think it's a great use for the area. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Carolis, the attorney for the project, and he can present the short PowerPoint that hopefully will show up properly on the screen.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Charlie. That was an excellent summary. Bob Carolis, on behalf of Alliance and Goat's Beard. I know you have other agendas. I will endeavor to be brief, and Charlie gave an excellent summary. I just wanted to introduce... I'm joined by some of my team members tonight. I know we have Jake Malnato from Alliance, who's excited to be bringing the Goat's Beard to the Spring Mill Center. I have Mike McCrory on behalf of the Goat's Beard, who's excited to be coming to the Township. And then you'll hear from Ken Purdy in a moment, who will just walk you through the PowerPoint presentation. As Charlie mentioned, this is a waiver of land development request. Essentially, if the board's familiar with this... I know the board's familiar with the former cafe, Zoe's, spaced at the corner of Hector and Lee Street. Right now, there is a, what I would, I guess, refer to as a narrow raised concrete outdoor patio. And as you can see here from the cover page of the slide, what we're proposing to do is simply, at grade level, bring that out towards Lee Street via Trex Patio Materials, add some fencing, some patio lighting. In the back, there will be, you know, an area for some leisure recreation like Bago and maybe some mat around neck chairs and things like that. And as Charlie mentioned, you know, when we come towards Lee Street, we did enter into a whole harmless agreement with the board for those improvements that would be in the ultimate right-of-way. So if the board won't mind, I would just like to have Mike McCrory come up just for a minute, just introduce himself on behalf of Goat's Beard before we hear from Ken Purdy.
Well, thanks. Thanks for having me tonight, and I'm actually very familiar with your township. My grandmother actually worked at Lee Tire many years ago in this building, and so did a couple of my uncles. And I worked for a company called JLL also, done a lot of leasing, commercial leasing in the township over the years. So thank you very much. Ken has, you know, some of the details on what we're looking to do, but we're excited to, you know, hopefully come in here and open up and be part of the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Kent Purdy, Purdy Architecture and Design. Charlie, if we could go to the first slide, I'll walk you through.
You have a remote there?
There we go. This first slide, just site plan located at Lee and Hector Street. The dark gray area on the left-hand side is the area of the patio and the outdoor dining area. The light gray areas are areas of the building.
Pointy doesn't work on the television screens.
Okay. Pointed at the laptop?
Pointed at mine.
Can you advance it, Charlie?
I think I can do it.
There you go.
This next slide shows the improvements in that gray area. On the left-hand side of the plan there, you'll see the open area with gaming, cornhole, and a more casual area. To the right side is the seating areas. There's two patios there, an upper and a lower. And then if we can go to the next slide... These are building elevations. The top one is from the parking lot side of Goat's Beard. The middle one is the elevation looking from Hector Street. The patio and outdoor dining areas on the left-hand side of that elevation. And then the one on the bottom of the screen is the side facing Lee Street. And that's, you know, the existing building there. If we can go to the next slide. Another view of the Lee Street elevation showing the area of the dining. Heading off to the right, the right-hand side of the screen is Hector Street. If we can go to the next. This is the view from Hector Street, you know, with the screening in front of the dining area on the left-hand side. Lee Street is to the left of that tree. And then there's a sidewalk in between that tree and the screening for the dining area. If we can go to the next. This is a rendering looking from that corner. Lee Street is in the photo. The existing sidewalk, existing grass area, and the existing stone wall will remain. And then we're building our fencing and dining area right up to the edge of the wall, which is what we're asking for the waiver for today. If we can go to the next. It's just a zoomed-in version, so the pieces that are sitting within the right-of-way, you'll have some fencing, some planting, posts for the Edison bulb lighting, and then some of the Trex patio surface will be in that right-of-way. This one just shows some of the dimensional items related to the right-of-way. You can see the property line, the dash line running parallel right there, and then it turns the corner. And then to the right is the ultimate right-of-way line, right there, and then down along Hector Street. So there's, you know, five feet, four inches of space that we're building into in between the existing stone wall and that ultimate right-of-way line. And that's what we're looking for the waiver for. Next slide. These are views from the street showing the starting point of where the fencing would be, you know, screening the dining area. Next slide. This was a parking summary that we had worked through with Charlie, discussing the existing parking on the site, what was grandfather, and what is needed for the parking. We have unallocated spaces right now, so with this additional area being built outside, we need an additional 14 spaces. So that's being taken from the unallocated number of spaces already on the site.
If I could just add a point about parking, we are confident that there's going to be a lot of sharing of parking because this is a restaurant that will be open at dinner and later, and much of the office parking for the Corporate Center will not be in use at that time. So even though there's adequate parking for full use of the Corporate Center with the restaurant in full operation, we really don't expect that we're going to need all that to utilize all that parking. So it's a very conservative analysis, I believe.
What are the hours?
The hours are, what, till 9:00?
Would be lunch and dinner.
Like 11:00 a.m.?
11:00 a.m., yes. And then as we grow, you know, potentially do just have breakfast service service the Corporate Center.
Like Tuesday through Sunday or all week?
No, this would be seven days a week.
Nice.
Seven days a week.
There's a parking lot immediately adjacent to the proposed restaurant?
Correct.
Will that lot be open and available for customers at all times that the restaurants open?
The lot that's currently next to it has a gate on it. It is currently set to open around 3:00 p.m. on a daily basis. So, you know, on the... When it goes up, anybody can come in and out.
So where does the lunch crowd park then if they can't park right next to the restaurant?
There are other spaces, you know, back in the lot. If we could go to the last slide, I can point those out. Keep going. There's one more, Charlie. This... You can see Lot A.
Right.
That's the one that has the gate currently.
Yep.
And that's the one that currently opens at 2:00 p.m. And then there's the other lot to the right of it, Lot B, and that's fully open all the time. And then if you go up Lee Street on the left-hand side there, all this parking in the back here, you know, up in the Corporate Center is all open parking for anybody.
Yeah. Realistically, they're not... People aren't going to park all the way up there, but B is open.
Correct.
At all times?
Yes.
Okay.
And just again, for reference, the restaurant's down here on the bottom.
Yep.
And the outdoor seating is right here.
Is there a reason that gate doesn't open until 2:00 or 3:00?
Right now, it's just a matter of controlling the number of people that pull in up front. And the people in the Corporate Center that have access to it have cards right there. Yeah. I would just add that it's the... The parking lot up front, the reason that the gate is closed during, you know, something like normal business hours is that it's something offered to tenants as an incentive to sign leases, that they get a certain number of reserved spaces for executives in the front lot.
So it's open after 2 or 3 weekdays and all the time on weekends?
All the time on weekends. That's right. If you want to go back to that last slide, I'll just touch base on that. This was just the breakdown of the parking that I just discussed based on the use and the additional parking spaces that were needed based on the areas associated there. And that was associated with that same letter that was put forward with the total summary for the lot. And then the last slide you just saw was the full parking, but that's the extent of the presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other board comment? What kind of food do you have there?
It's really... There's a lot of different types of food in there. We have two restaurants currently, ones in Manny Oak and ones in Wayne. We encourage you guys to come out and see us. Our menu's online. You'll be able to... It'll be a very similar menu, but American Gastro Love's probably the easiest way to sum it up.
Gotcha. Okay. Any public comment? Hearing none, are we ready to... Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2023-01, granting approval of land development waiver for SLD #11-22, Alliance HP Spring Mill Property LLC, 1100 East Hector Street for outdoor dining for proposed new restaurant?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2023-02, approving the 2023 Annual Emergency Operation Plan Promulgation?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller? Thank you, Chair McCusker. This is something that we do every year at the direction of our Emergency Management Coordinator and Fire Marshal Nick Weaver. It allows us, in the event we have any kind of emergency that's declared, that we have adopted this promulgation identifying we have an emergency operation plan and would be in line for any kind of state or potential federal funding. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2023-03, establishing the Board of Supervisors' meeting schedule and format for 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller? Thank you, Chair McCusker. No changes to our meeting schedule. They will be the same as 2022. Moving forward. Great. Any other board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2023-04, establishing the Township Travel and Business Expense Policy for 2023?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller? Thank you, Chair McCusker. Again, no changes to our travel policy from 2022 to 2023. All of it will stay the same in terms of the amount of monies that would be reimbursed should an employee travel for a work-related conference or training. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution #2023-05, establishing the Township Holidays for Non-Uniformed, Non-Union Employees in 2023?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller? Again, no changes to our holiday schedule. Obviously, not a presidential election year, so that will not be valid for 2023. Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. Miller?
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment for Chapter 10 Historic District clarifying what improvements require HARB review?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, I'm... We're going to turn that over to Mr. Guttenplan for explanation.
Thank you. Currently, there is some ambiguity in Chapter 10 concerning what HARB is required to review and what the board therefore is required to approve certificates of appropriateness for. The intent of the law and the intent of our district is that improvements that are visible from the public right-of-way are ones that are to be reviewed and for which certificates should be authorized before permits are granted. However, there's some ambiguity that has led HARB to review any improvement to any property in the Historic District, whether it was visible from a public road, private road, or not visible at all. I'm sure you recall the myriad of Catherine Lane improvements that we've been looking at, decks behind houses, patios behind houses, things of that nature. The two very minor amendments to the language of the district, primarily the definition of alteration, which clarifies exactly what we should be looking at, would solve that and only allow us to be looking at improvements that are visible from a public right-of-way. So what would have happened, frankly, if we had done this in the past, is that nothing on Catherine Lane would have been subject to review and approval because it's a private road. And much of what we look at on some of the other properties where we're looking at improvements behind the buildings, we wouldn't be looking at. So if this were... Is passed in a future meeting, that would all be clarified. We've worked with the Solicitor's Office to come up with this, the minor language and then the amendment that you have in front of you. The changes are in red, and they are, as I mentioned, to the definition of what is an alteration and also some very minor wording into the section that talks about what improvements require permits. So if you agree, we would hold a public hearing at a future meeting and consider this amendment to the... To Chapter 10.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment? You do have a public comment. Ms. Soe?
So first, I just want to say congratulations to Fran McCusker on becoming Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
I have two concerns about this revised section of the Historic Ordinance, Chapter 10. And the first has to do with the introduction of the phrase "original construction," which appears in the revised definition of alteration. When I read that, it popped out as an unusual phrase, something I hadn't seen anywhere else in Chapter 10. And as a result, it sent me to the Historic District Act, the Commonwealth Historic District Act of 1961 as amended, which I reviewed and printed out. Nowhere in this enabling legislation does the phrase "original construction" appear. And nowhere in Chapter 10 does the phrase appear. Instead, in its place, Chapter 10 repeats what appears in the enabling legislation, which is the word "direction," which presumably refers to new construction. So it is my assertion that this phrase "original construction" introduces a term that is not in the enabling legislation and may cause confusion. And I'll give you an example. It's not perfectly on point, but I think it does have... It warrants some consideration. Several months back, HARB considered the demolition request for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish two sections of the property at 15 East Germantown Pike, a property long vacant and in very bad condition that backs onto the Corson Homestead. HARB gave a thumbs up to the demolition request, asserting that the brick addition at the west end and the summer kitchen at the rear, constructed of... end and the summer kitchen at the rear, constructed of clabbered wood siding, were not original In fact, each of them is quite old or was quite old, they're now gone. The brick addition was late 1800s, early 1900s, and the summer kitchen was much older than that. So I'm concerned that this terminology could further confuse the discussion with regard to existing buildings in the Historic District and, and potentially new construction. And I would argue that the definition of alteration should incorporate the word "direction" as it appears in the enabling legislation, and that that replaced "original construction." My second concern has to do with a comment that Charlie made, which confirms a suspicion that I had, that new construction, not on the public way, not fronting on the public way, would not be subject to review by HARB. Charlie said in his introductory comments that the development on Catherine Lane, since it does not front onto Spring Mill, a public way, would not be visible from the public way, and therefore would not be subject to review by HARB. I think that that would be short-sighted. I think it's important that new construction be visible, but not necessarily fronting onto the public way, be subject to HARB review. Although there are not many vacant parcels in the Historic District that might be subject to new construction, there is one at 12-14 East Germantown Pike. And in fact, there was a proposal before the planning commission and HARB to build new townhouses behind the existing structures. They would be accessible through a private lane, but they would be entirely visible from Germantown Pike. So my concerns are twofold. One is introducing terminology into a definition that does not appear in the enabling legislation, nor does it appear anywhere else, nor is it defined in Chapter 10. And secondarily, and perhaps more importantly, I'm concerned that new construction or alteration, not fronting onto the public way, but indeed visible from the public way, would no longer be subject to HARB review.
Thank you, Ms. Ove. Charlie, is there any reason why we have that terminology in there?
The terminology is based on the Act primarily, and when Dave Sand and I went through it, we were very careful to make sure that the amendments were more inclusive than less inclusive, with the exception of things that would not be seen from the public right-of-way. If something on a private road, for example, would also be visible from a public road, it would have to go in front of HARB and you'd have to get a certificate of appropriateness. So my statement about Catherine Lane might have been a little bit exaggerated. There are some things towards Spring Mill Road, for example, that you'd see, that are on Catherine Lane, that you would see from Spring Mill Road, and those would be subject to HARB. The deck in back of the house, all the way down the street that we reviewed a month or so ago at the last meeting, would not be subject to HARB because it's nowhere visible from any public road. But I believe that this is actually closer to the language of the state act than we were before. We can take another look at it, but I think it, at least in our opinion, it was much more inclusive than it, than it had been. And the intent of the change to the word "alteration," to the definition of alteration, was to very much make sure that nothing would fall through the cracks and everything, pretty much, including new construction of a building or a structure, a fence. If it were visible from the public right-of-way, it would be an alteration, therefore come under the auspices of HARB and a certificate of appropriateness. So we can take another look at it, but that was our intent, aren't? And this, I, I can tell you from very personal experience, I sit on another HARB, that with this change, it's extremely similar to other HARB ordinances that are in the Commonwealth. I'm familiar with several.
Can I make two follow-up comments?
Again, we can take another look at it before it goes to public hearing.
Can I make two follow-up comments?
Go ahead, Ms. Ove.
First, I want to thank Charlie for clarifying what "visible from the public way" refers to. I'm glad to hear that Catherine Lane, and I presume in its entirety, save for what's at the rear, were not otherwise visible from Spring Mill, would be subject to HARB review, even under this revised Chapter 10. Is that correct? You're, you're not suggesting that any portion of the facades of the Catherine Lane development would have been exempt from review?
You're not, right, Charlie? That's, that's not what you're saying there.
Just confirm that.
I don't believe it is.
Right.
Okay, and then?
I think the other thing-
It kind of doesn't matter at this point, anyway.
I also think the other thing that's important to consider, we haven't changed anything else in Chapter 10. HARB still has the authority to look at things that are not necessarily issues that have to come before you as certificate of appropriateness, but that are developments and proposals that may be going on in Historic District that they may want to assist and provide some guidance to developers or to, to property owners. None of that's diminished or changed. All, all of those other powers of HARB that are listed in the ordinance remain unchanged.
Okay.
And of course, it's, it's moved with regard to Catherine Lane, but there are other vacant parcels, such as the one in 12-14 East Germantown, where a townhouse project was proposed. Similarly, there was the K. Hoffnian project that was proposed, which is dead in the water, thank goodness, on, on the Course and Homestead. But with regard to the phrase "original construction," I'm not quite sure what that means, but perhaps defining it would be helpful, because the word "direction" is in the enabling legislation and appears elsewhere in Chapter 10. And then suddenly you have this new term that's, that is in neither place. So if council believes that it is appropriate to include it, perhaps it needs a definition.
We can certainly look into this.
Look at this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any board comment? Ready to vote?
This is an advertisement.
This is simply an advertisement.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Steve Ziegler from the Shade Tree Commission and thank him for his 13 years of volunteer service to White Marsh Township?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for your time and volunteerism to the township. Do I have a motion to approve Zelenkovsky Axelrod LLC to audit the township financial statements for 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chairman Cusker. They are in the, this will be the second year of a three, three-year engagement where they'll be auditing the 2022 financial statement for the township.
All right, any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That'll bring us to the public comment period. Did I miss something?
Excuse me, Mr. Cusker, it looks like, for some reason, I think our-
My paper didn't have that.
We have lines here, it looks like it was cut off the last one for bank depositories.
Okay.
It would just be a motion approving the township bank depositories for 2023.
Do I have a motion to approve the township banking depositories for 2023?
So moved.
Second.
So this is just another administrative item that we do during the organization meeting, identifying our bank depositories. TV Bank is our primary, primary bank. We have other depositories that we use, such as Pliget, Pennsylvania Treasury Invest looks at our outside tax collectors, business tax collectors, Tri-State Earned Income, Open Space Local Services is Berchheimer, also those consultants involved in the police pension plan, actuary Conrad Siegel, investment advisor PFM, and the custodial services through PNC Bank, and then our non-uniform retirements plan manager and custodian, Nation One is the manager custodian is RBC Wealth Management.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now that will bring us to the public comment period. Do we have any public comment?
I'd like to make a comment, please, Sidelzo.
Okay.
This concerns HARB's meeting start time. I attended the last HARB meeting, which did not have a quorum, but there was some discussion there about changing the starting time of the meetings, moving them from 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. The next meeting of HARB, which is scheduled for next week, is scheduled to begin at 8:00 a.m. However, Plymouth Township, in posting the meeting times and dates for all of its boards and commissions for the coming year, has indicated that HARB meetings will start at 8:30 a.m. So I think there's some confusion, and I'm not quite sure what time the meetings start and whether the fact that Plymouth's start time contradicts what was discussed at the last HARB meeting warrants some discussion.
I think we'll have to make a call to Plymouth.
Yep. All right, thanks, Ms. Ove.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any board comment? All right, I'd like to announce we had an executive session prior to the night's meeting discussing real estate and personnel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.